Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing section of the Warrington Board of Alderman Meeting for Tuesday, April 19, 2016, to address Section 405.285, the planned unit development, ADM-80. Jack Canna, please go on.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item I have is a proposed amendment to Section 405.285, planned unit development, ADM-80. I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record, the municipal code by reference, my planning zoning report, and a public hearing notice. This motion for approval passed seven to zero with two absent and one vacancy at the March 3, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions.
At this time, we'll open that up to the public. If anybody in the public would like to speak, please come up to this podium, state who you are, and we will allow you a maximum of five minutes to speak. Not seeing anyone, move on to the next one. Next part of the public hearing will be Section 425, assigned regulations of ADM-81.
This is a proposed text amendment to Section 425, signed regulations, ADM-81. I'd like to ask once again to make part of the public hearing record, the municipal code by reference, public hearing notice, and my planning and zoning report. Motion for approval passed seven to one with one absent and one vacancy at the April 7, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, we open this up to the public. Once again, as stated, you step up to the podium and state who you are. You have a five-minute maximum to speak. Not seeing anyone. We'll go ahead and bring the public hearing section of the Warrington Board of Alderman Meeting for Tuesday, April 19, 2016 to a close. I'd like to open the regular Board of Alderman Meeting for April 19, 2016. You would all please rise and send a fledge of allegiance. Fledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda is a regular meeting minutes from April 5, 2016, monthly grounds and maintenance report, monthly public works report, the monthly police report, the monthly building commission and code enforcement report, and the monthly admin report.
Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Alderman Dyer, signed by Alderman Delloy. Can I roll call vote, please?
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next item is hearing from the public. Once again, we ask if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak, come to the podium, state who you are, and you have a five-minute maximum. Not seeing anyone, we'll move on. Next item would be the Board of Alderman comments.
Yeah, I'd like to ask in the next meeting that we put on the agenda, consent agenda discussion, because I would like to see if we would consider not having the consent agenda used any longer, because we do have three new Aldermen taking place, and I think it gives an opportunity for the Board to interact with department heads, which we're definitely have lost since we've gone to the consent agenda. So I'd like to see that on the agenda next meeting.
I'd like to make a comment about our cleanup the city day. We had a nice morning for it compared to last year. It was probably 20 degrees warmer this year, and I think we had good turnout. I don't know what the final numbers are, but I'm sure we're going to get them, right? Okay. So, thank you.
Bob? Tommy? Kind of keep this a little short and sweet, because we have so much stuff going on. One thing I did want to bring up, it really doesn't have to do with our city, but I don't know if anybody knows about our neighboring town of Truesdale and the mayor there, but I believe he just got a report back from me he's cancer-free totally, and I was happy to hear that about Murray. If you don't know that, he was hit pretty hard, and he's a trooper and a pretty strong individual, but I was really happy to hear that and just thankful for it, so. Also, I believe we got some drawings from our cleanup.
Drawings? Do you have Karen?
Sure. Oh, I was thinking of paper.
No, not like drawings and stuff.
Paint drawing. I think Karen should pick them all since she was there.
Oh, Bob was?
Bob was there.
Oh, I can't look. What are we drawing for?
Weed eater.
Weed eaters first.
All right.
Go ahead.
Well, you go.
Looks like Dave Nichol.
Weed eater.
N-I-C-H-O-L. I don't know if I can pronounce that right.
Was that board one or two?
I don't know. You go on.
Probably two. Gary was out there bringing all of his people in. That's why I told him you were all sitting out there.
For the lead floor, it's Dan Phelps.
All right.
The tension in the room was so high.
It was high. If I was quicker, I would have announced it. It's chief's wife.
Again.
Gosh.
You'll never live that long.
I know.
Especially since she wasn't the one that came through with the truckload.
No, she was.
You were.
No, no. Well, this time, right. Makes for a great story, though.
It does.
So, does each department head want to go and introduce their people?
They aren't here to be introduced tonight, just hired. They'll be here next time.
Is it Aria? Is that correct? Aria?
Era.
Era?
Thank you.
That's right.
Era Dempster has a cashier in finance at $12 an hour to start, with a start date of 4/18/2016. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Hawley for the approval to hire Ara Dempster. Is that right? As a cashier in the finance at $12 an hour, with start date of 4/18/2016. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
All right, next one would be for Erin Wirick as maintenance laborer in public works at $14 an hour with start date of 4/11/2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dyer, signed by Alderman Hawley. If I could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next one would be Jonathan Struckoff as a meter reader in the public works at $14 an hour with start date of 4/21/2016. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second. I was letting Tony handle it. I thought she'd like it.
Motion made by Alderman Delloy, signed by Alderman Cassely. If I could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Brandy's been busy.
Next item agenda is certification of election results. I'll entertain a motion to approve the certification of election.
No, no, no.
Do you need to read them?
Go ahead if you prefer.
No, if you want to read them, go ahead.
All right. So the certification of election results are for Alderman Ward 1, Mike Schell Harvey, 290 votes, Damian Frederick, 540 votes, sorry. Alderman Ward 2, Daniel Lee Durbin, 138, Scott Schultz, 286. Alderman Ward 3, John Miller, 136 votes, Jim Dyer, 68. And then we have for Proposition 1, which was the sales tax on the tiling of motor vehicles. There was 361 yes votes, 651 no votes, which means it passed. And then Proposition 2 for the annexation, 707 yes votes and 295 no votes.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion for the certification of election results for Aldermen and Proposition 1 and 2 for the April 5, 2016 election.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Hawley, signed by Alderman Dyer. If I could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. All right. Next item agenda would be the presentation of flags. Presentation of flags is for Alderman Ward 1, Jim Dyer, for his service from 2016. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Presentation.
Presentation of flag for Ms. Tony Hawley for service of Ward 1 from 2014/2016.
Thank you.
Jim, if you could, real quick.
Sure. Yes.
There you go. One, two, three.
Thanks to the staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Bye.
See ya.
You all can stay.
We have a bet.
The smiling is leave. So I believe the moment several people in the room are waiting for the oath of office for new elected officials. You guys would please rise?
All right, if you guys want.
This is the time to make the short.
This is the.
All right, grace of the Lord, I am going to repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
For the position of Alderman.
For the position of Alderman.
Of the city of Warrington.
Of the city of Warrington.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
Provisions of all laws of this state.
Provisions of all laws of this state.
Affecting this city.
Affecting this city.
And the code of ordinances.
And the code of ordinances.
Of the city of Warrington.
The city of Warrington.
And I will faithfully demean myself in office.
And I will faithfully demean myself in office.
Congratulations.
No, I tell you. Congratulations. Congratulations. That's what I paid for that one.
I'll go for it.
I'll go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go for it.
I will.
Like you've never seen.
I've never seen it, but.
I'll pick your ass.
Yep, that's the way I roll.
Turn those on. You want to turn it on there, Mike?
We got it.
Don't think you.
There you go. And we are on item 12.
Next item would be the, you guys settle in, I'm sorry, before I go forward. Okay. All right, thank you. Next item would be the election of board president.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mike Schell Harvey the board president for the upcoming term.
Second.
Motion to all other appointments or nominations cease. Motion to all nominations cease.
He wants to cease nominations?
Okay.
Will you second that?
No.
Okay.
So, there's a new kid on the block. What's it be? You haven't seen here to do this yet.
Motion made to nominate Mike Schell Harvey as board president by Alderman Cassely, signed by Alderman Delloy. If I could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Abstain.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with one abstaining.
Guess we should have told you about that, huh?
What's that?
Guess we should have told you about that.
We didn't get the memo?
No. Next item agenda would be appointments at committees. I'll entertain a motion to approve the committee appointments for 2016 as submitted by myself.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cassely, signed by Alderman Ock. If I could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Abstain.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with one abstain.
Guess we should have told you about that, huh?
What's that?
Guess we should have told you about that.
We didn't get the memo?
No. Next item agenda would be appointments at committees. I'll entertain a motion to approve the committee appointments for 2016 as submitted by myself.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cassely, signed by Alderman Ock. If I could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next item would be the appointment of Melissa Booth to the Tourism Commission for a three-year term. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cassely, signed by Alderman Schell Harvey. If I could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next item would be the approval for mayor to sign the Agape's letter of support. I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Actually, before I do that, would you like to make a comment or anything?
Well, Michelle's here. She'd like to say something about it. As I understand, it's for the NAP application. It might be interesting for the public to, if you talk a little bit about what the funds for that do, because traditionally, Agape is thought of as a food bank, but Agape's so much more than that, so it might be interesting for the public to know what the NAP is for, and you could plug the contributions if you want to do that.
Please, if you would just come in. I know he's already introduced you, but if you would just say anything you want to do.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Burnth. I'm the executive director of Agape. We are seeking the mayor's signature for a letter of support for our application to the Neighborhood Assistance Program grant, which is a state tax credits grant for businesses located in Missouri. We have had funding through the NAP program for 14 years now. We apply for two-year cycles, so our funding ends June of this year, and the new funding, if approved, would begin in July and go for two years. We've used the funding for a variety of things over the years. Most recently, we've used it for our Community Workforce Enhancement Program, which is a daycare subsidy for parents who are seeking post-secondary education and/or a combination of working, so going to school full-time or a combination of going to school and working. And we are able to pay for their daycare subsidy through that program up until the end of June. We're actually shifting what we're applying for this year, as well as increasing the amount that we are applying for. So to Alderman Ock's point, we will be seeking contributions in the form of tax credit purchases at a much higher scale this year, so they are 70% tax credits that we get approved for. We will be seeking $400,000 over a two-year period this year, and we're actually going to shift what we're applying for to a new program that we have called SAFE, which stands for Shelter Assistance for Families in Emergencies. So one of the things I was going to talk about in the next agenda item is the increase that we have seen in homeless people walking through our front door. So literally, within the last year, we have gone from having maybe one call every two to three weeks from someone who is actually out on the street to having multiple calls per day. These are individuals, these are often families with kids, and they literally walk through our front door with their children and say, "This is it. We're out on the street. What can you do to help us?" And right now, we don't have a significant amount of funding available for that program area, because the need has grown so dramatically so quickly. So the Shelter Assistance for Families in Emergency Program has three key areas. It's emergency housing, so that's short-term emergency housing in the form of a hotel. As you all know, there's no homeless shelter here in the county anywhere, so the nearest one is in O'Fallon, which is a really insurmountable distance for most people who are homeless. The second piece of the program is rapid rehousing, so quickly moving people into supportive housing using a housing-first model. And the third piece is financial assistance for people who are at high risk of becoming homeless but have not yet lost their home. And so how do we keep that family in their home and avoid having them fall off the cliff? So that's what we're applying for this year, and we certainly hope that we are successful in our application, and would appreciate your support. I'm next, so should I sit or stay?
You can go ahead and sit until next segment. Just front row, I'd sit down, because I'm fighting a question on the next one. Any questions for this item?
No, and this is typical when you apply for a NAP application, you need the supporting letters in the application from various government bodies, and this is pretty typical. My organization, Ryan Work, also has tax credits, although we only have 50% credits, and we generally do this as part of the application process. So I would make a motion that we.
Hang on one second. Did you have another?
No, I have a question. I understand thoroughly.
Okay, okay.
I was going to, I agree with Eric very.
Excellent. So I thought it just, another Alderman making that up, so go ahead.
Okay, make a motion that we would authorize the mayor signing the letter of support for NAP applications for Agape.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Delloy for mayor to sign the letter of support for Agape Ministries. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next item would be renewal of service contract with Agape for 2016 to 2017. I'd like to, once again.
So I am here tonight to request a renewal of the service contract between Agape and the city. That service contract has been in place for 19 years. Last year, we were approved for an increase, which we greatly appreciated. We are respectfully requesting to stay at the same level as last year for this year. I don't want to take up a lot of time tonight, but I did just want to take this opportunity to share with you some changes that have gone on in our organization lately, because they're pretty exciting for us. So some things you might know about and some things you might not. So the first is that we did consolidate our two locations into one located here in Warrington. So we used to have a second food pantry located in Wright City. For a variety of reasons, we did close that location, and we're now serving the entire county out of the Warrington location. That change happened back in October of 2015. The second big change that happened pretty much simultaneously to that was that we received a grant from the MTS Foundation in the amount of $10,000, which allowed us to physically transform our food pantry area so that we could switch over to a client choice model for our pantry. for our pantry. So traditional food pantries and sort of the way they had been done for a long time was that you would come to the food pantry, volunteers would box up some food for you, and they would sort of take two cans of green beans, two cans of corn, two cans of carrots, and just sort of put it in a box and then give it to you, and that was that, with really no regard to what people like to eat, any sort of dietary restrictions that people might have, any sort of equipment restrictions that people might have. Not all of our clients have ovens, not all of our clients have microwaves, for instance, those sorts of limitations. And so we stepped back and started looking at what were current best practices and what, you know, how should we be operating? And client choice is really considered a best practice right now. So we were able to use that $10,000 to physically transform this space. It now looks much more like a grocery store when you come to our food pantry. And so clients actually go shopping with a volunteer around the aisles, just like you would in a grocery store. They select their own food. There are limitations by family size, by large category. So for instance, if your family gets six cans of vegetables, you choose six cans of carrots if you want, whatever the case may be. The next family might choose six cans of green beans. It all sort of evens out in the end. And it really increases the dignity that's afforded to our clients, and it also decreases food waste and expenses for us. So we've had tremendously positive feedback from our clients, from our volunteers. It's been really well received. So that's been a huge change for us that's been very, very positive, and we're able to serve our clients better through that program. The other thing that we've done, and this is really in line with what I was just talking about with the increase in homelessness, is we're realigning our resources. So that includes the AP application and some other resources to try to be able to meet the most critical needs that we're seeing in this community. So, you know, that's things like shifting away from the daycare subsidy as being a primary program and, you know, moving into SAFE as being a primary program, and really wanting to make sure that we're doing a needs assessment and meeting those needs. So we're realigning our staff resources and making sure that we're making the best use of all of our donors' money, including the city's obviously, so that we can meet the most pressing needs of the community. I'm happy to take other questions. I know this is my first time before some of you who are new, so if there's more information or more background you'd like, I'm happy to provide that as well.
Preferably.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Well, I mean, do we make a motion or we just ask that it be placed in the budget as part of the budget process? I'm not sure what we, Terry, what do we typically do?
I think that's exactly what you've done, is just made a motion to include it in the upcoming year's budget.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we include $18,000 to Agapi Ministry in the upcoming budget year.
I'll second.
Bush made the Alderman Ochs and Alderman Deloitte do approve the service contract in the amount of $18,000 for the Agapi Ministries 2016, 2017.
Alderman Ochs?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessely?
Yes.
Motion case six zero. Next item would be the discussion topic, which is fireworks sales. Anyone want to start off on this one?
Well, I guess we started a process whereby it came up that we were concerned about how much time it was taken to track down violators of the fireworks code. And so the decision was made that we're going to have a set time period in which fireworks can be exploded, I guess is a better word, used in a certain time period, which would, I think, make a little bit sense. Similar communities are doing that. And after that conversation, we got into a discussion about, well, if we're going to allow fireworks to be shot in town and you can stop right outside the city limits and buy fireworks, why would it not make sense for the city of Warrington to allow fireworks to be sold within the city limits? Because it doesn't, it just doesn't make sense that you could walk across to Truesdale or walk anyplace and buy fireworks. Why would we leave them out? So that was really the point of the discussion and the point of what we've been talking about. Now, I think there was some mixed conversations. There were some concerns about, you know, location, you know, where temporary stands we put and those type of things, and I think we had tried to address them in the ordinance. There were some concerns about the timeframe, but I think we generally came to the conclusion that the timeframe that's in the ordinance was something we could all live with. So that's kind of where this is at.
I think some of the discussion was on, like, when you said the placement of it was due to fire issues, if the chief had concerns of that, or you should say?
Right.
Fire chief.
So is there further discussion on the sale of fireworks or are we going to-
It's an open discussion right now.
Yeah, I mean, there's an ordinance to be passed, is it tonight?
No.
No, there's an ordinance that we have to approve that will come on the agenda in the next meeting for us to actually formally put in place. I think maybe the feeling was since the board was going to turn over that there might be some other feelings on the part of the new members as to allowing fireworks to be in the city or allowing the sale in the city. I think that was really what the thought was.
It's more of a guidance that we're not for approval tonight, just so we can see what-
What we did was we had had the city board, who did it, Terry, you or?
No, city attorney.
Attorney, went and looked at some other codes to see what other cities did who allowed it. So, you know, I don't particularly have a problem selling them. I mean, it seems to me like they were selling them right across the street from the city limits in Truesdale that, you know, I don't know. Do we have the ability to restrict that they don't go up near a gas station or, I mean, anything like that? Do we have that ability?
Sure, absolutely. You could, basically what I did is I looked at about six different cities that allowed fireworks sales. Valley Park, Wright City, Cotleville, some cities in Jefferson County, and actually Wright City had probably the best, I think, the best constructed ordinance, and that's what I modeled it after. Wright City approves theirs through a conditional use permit, which I would imagine the logic behind that is it gives them a little bit more control in the location.
Yeah.
You know, they generally let it, allow it in the commercial and the industrial zone, but with the shortened timeframe, we thought a permit may be better because, you know, conditional use permit's going to take, yeah, how many days does the CUP take to get approved?
They need to apply at least a month in advance for public hearing requirements.
So it would take a month in advance? So we did it as a permit that is just like any type of permit that you get for a business occupational license to sell fireworks. If you guys want to further restrict the location, because we just kind of pulled the commercial and industrial, that's what Wright City had, I kind of looked at the map and said, well, that kind of makes sense. But yeah, you could put, I mean, I have some limitations, some geographical limitations, but we could add them if you want me to consider putting something about gas stations. And the only other thing is, is we set the fee for the permit at $500. Wright City's is $2,000. Cotleville's $10,000. Now, they went to the ballot to get the $10,000 permit fee approved, so they're kind of all over the place. So we just were like, well, $500 seems like a good number, but that was the main thing we kind of needed guidance. Because I think like Alderman Ochs said, I think we got most of the stuff in that you guys wanted, but, you know, we could add some geographical limitations and then obviously what you guys want to do for the permit fee.
Well, since we're moving in the right direction, and it does certainly make sense since they're selling them in Truesdale, and it does certainly make sense to sell in Warrington in regards to the permit, as far as the cost, $500, it certainly seems fair to me. If it goes over well, I mean, we can certainly adjust from there. As far as the conditional use permit, that is kind of a lengthy process.
Right.
We can certainly change it next year. If our goal is to allow fireworks to be sold in the city limits this year, then just a limitation on restrictions of whatever you would recommend, a quarter mile or 2,000 feet from any gas station or, and I'm just arbitrarily speaking.
Sure, absolutely.
A common sense approach of 1,000 feet from a gas station or whatever, something-
That makes sense.
Something like that would be pretty simple.
Sure, absolutely.
A $500 permit, that they can come down and apply for and open it. The Elks is a perfect example. I mean, I know that they sell fireworks at, I think, in Truesdale. I don't know if they've done it in the last two or three years, but that they had to move, I know there was some discussion, they had to move to a different location in Truesdale or, and there's been some other discussion about it. So I think it's pretty good revenue for the city, or for some of them anyway.
I wonder if it makes sense if we just kind of really quickly went through what was drafted, you know, because section A here parks with usage five to 10 p.m. on the fourth. And I think that's kind of what we agreed on at the previous meetings. If you drop down to section B, talks about the permit needed. Part two talks about effective April 1st each year. Of course, now if we pass this and use the April 1st date, it won't happen this year. It'll happen the next year. So we'd have to really change that date if we wanted to speed the process up for this year.
You could put an addendum to that line that says for this year.
Just for this year.
Would we want it, would that something we could get in so an application can go in by June 1? Would that give us enough time to pass the ordinance at the next meeting or even May 1, when we can start taking applications?
I don't think we could do May 1, but I think we could do June 1.
Yeah.
Then I maybe think, my thought is, and somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, I would think under B, section B number two, that we would maybe modify that instead of saying as of April 1st, say that as of May 1st or June 1st.
Yeah, I think we can do June.
That way we can get this done this year.
Yeah.
Transferring of permits, I don't have any issue with that. The permit fee, I mean, you said $500 seems fair, $10,000 seems more fair.
Whatever we could charge, but in the same respect, we're just getting, we're in infancy, and hopefully this goes over well and it's a success and we can always change.
And you might get more vendors at that price than you would at a higher price, because I could see maybe somebody on one side of town, somebody on the other side of town, so you might have some competing people.
Or you may draw vendors from other cities.
Or you may draw vendors from other cities. I'm sure if Wright City loses their vendor to Warrick and compared to 500 versus a $2,000 fee, you know.
It gets competition.
Well, so, I mean, we can leave it there or we could move, I don't care.
To kind of soundboard off of Alderperson Kessely's comment earlier, the conditional use permit, did you ask anybody down there in Wright City why they added it underneath that?
Well, I think because of the fee, well, there's some debate amongst municipal attorneys on whether, how much of a fee you can charge. So what a lot of municipalities did, because they were charging thousands of dollars in fees, is they took it to the voters to approve the permit fee. I think Wright City, giving them all credit, very smartly made a conditional use permit for the application fee for it. So it's a zoning issue, so it's not a building or not a licensing fee, it's not a Hancock issue. So I think we're okay with the $500, because I think what Alderman Miller said, you know, it's a very reasonable fee. We don't really have an issue of having it to be a conditional use. I see the, I see why that process would be helpful, but, you know, I kind of, my thought was, in talking to staff, was we can see how it goes this first year, and if it's a problem where it's a location issue, we got 50 of them popping up, or we really want to zone where they go, maybe that would be a time to look at maybe converting it to conditional use. But since assuming that the board was not going to charge a thousands of dollar fee, $5,000 or $10,000, I didn't think we really needed it to make it legal, if you will, because it wasn't going to be a very high fee.
Right.
So then on section five, location, this is kind of what Alderman Kessely was talking about. It says shall be at least 100 feet from any temporary or permanent building, at least 200 feet from any residence or housing unit. So I don't, that's hard to envision if you think about all the places around town. I would think that that's, seems like a reasonable distance.
You mean for the selling?
For the, yeah, for the site where the stuff, yeah, would be located. So it's going to have to be in commercial or industrial. So the chances of it being close to a home, pretty remote, unless you've got homes that are butting up against the commercial, which you do in some cases.
Yeah, that should pretty much cover it.
Okay, so then on the permit, what is the, should not be valid for more than 60 days, shall not be effective prior to May 6th of each year, nor effective after July 10th. So that gives a window before and after.
And that's consistent with Wright City's too, because I figured that must be the, and Valley Park and Cotleville, it's a pretty similar selling season, if you will. In talking to one permit holder, they said that really you only have the week before and the week after, and then you close down shop because it's a losing proposition anyway, but they need some time to set up.
What's the theory under seven, basically?
Seven, well, you know, that is, and I actually added a sentence under the use of fireworks as well, but also the sale. And this goes back to two years ago when we had the drought conditions. The thought was that, you know, if there's, in case of emergency, you guys can say, "Look, we don't want fireworks sold or shut off." You know, that you guys have the authority to do that, and that's clear in the ordinance.
And that's pretty standard among a lot of cities.
Okay, that's a good out there. So eight.
We have it under A in that fireworks usage too, Gary, that's under the use, fireworks usage, it says the mayor may prohibit the shooting or detonation, so it's actually covered both places, I think, pretty.
Yeah, and our thought was, if it's like a, you know, because that drought two years ago was midweek and it was, you know, was it supposed to rain? And I think they canceled the Fairbord fireworks and we did them later.
Well, I believe a lot of that was added, I believe it was almost five years ago. St. Peters had an issue with that where they did not have anything in their-
Well, some places allowed, like, you could sell, but you couldn't shoot them off.
You couldn't shoot them off, they limited the shooting, but everybody could buy it up, and if they went out and shot it, so they added that limitation for sales.
I don't imagine that that's going to happen a lot, but, you know, we, I figured we'd put that in there. And then the sailor display is just saying you can't sell unless you have a permit from the city. And then the cash deposit is what Wright City had. It seemed like one of the most reasonably low bonds or cash deposits or irrevocable letter of credit, because a letter of credit is, if, you know, it's getting a letter saying the city can draw up to $10,000 if there's, you know, some type of thing that occurs, it's a deposit on it. And that's what Wright City had, and I thought that was pretty consistent with the other cities and seemed like a good idea, because you are bringing Class C fireworks, which are explosives, into the city limits.
How do we handle the liability situation when it comes to these?
Well, the city's never going to have liability in that situation unless the city's vending fireworks themselves. You know, we could add a requirement that they carry insurance or some type of special insurance policy, but we typically don't require insurance from a business unless they're doing business with the city. So I didn't want to make it too inconsistent with our business license, because if, you know, the Dollar Store or Dollar Tree opens a business, they pay their business license, we don't require them to show proof of liability insurance with the city. That's their liability that's at stake, so you assume they're going to do it. But if we want to require them, because it is fireworks, to carry a liability policy, we can do that as well and show proof that it's a valid policy as part of the permitting process. It's kind of up to you. Most of the cities did not, surprisingly. Cotleville did, but most of the cities did not. But it's not, I mean, you guys can think about it, it's not on for tonight for approval. So, you know, if you think it's something that's important, this would definitely be a spot where we could do it. I just didn't know how far you guys wanted to go. And Alderman Miller said as well, is, you know, we can see how it goes and revisit it next year too if we need to.
Well, is there something we can move forward with tonight and we can always revisit and start it?
Well, it's not on for approval tonight, so I'll have to make those changes and we can have it on for approval next year, Alderman Miller.
So you want to continue discussion?
Do you, what's the point where we either-
Do you want to work fire?
Are we at a point where we could have it drafted up as it is or, basically, we just give approval for the attorney to draft up the ordinance? We can always, when the ordinance comes in place, if there's something that we want to change at the last second, we can amend the ordinance. So to get the process going, so we can hit a June 1st date, my thought would be that we would, unless somebody has a real objection with something here, that we'd go ahead and authorize the attorney to draft the ordinance, which will be available for next week.
Do you need a formal, Chris, do you need a formal thing on Eric?
No, we'll get it ready.
So I don't want to speak for everybody, unless somebody has an objection.
I agree if we get the ball rolling.
I think the only, the only thing we have to change is B2.
So majority says, please come forward with the altering of B2, please.
We'll get it ready.
All right, next item would be hearing from the Director of Operations, Finance Officer, Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is the renewal of the dental insurance for the city. We received proposals, both a renewal from Aetna, who is our current plan provider, as well as MetLife. The Aetna renewal came in at about a 1.7% increase over what our current dental plan is, and the MetLife proposal was significantly higher than that. So the recommendation is just to renew with Aetna, who is our current plan provider.
Any questions or comments for Terry?
You want a motion on each?
Yes, please.
Need a motion on it? Make a motion to approve the dental, dental insurance renewal with Aetna?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shell Harvey, signed by Alderman Ochs for the dental insurance renewal with Aetna. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessely?
Yes.
Alderman Ochs?
Yes.
Motion case six zero.
The next item I have for you is the renewal of the life insurance. Again, we received proposals from Anthem, who is the current provider. For the life insurance, we also received proposals from MetLife and Mutual of Omaha, both of which were higher than Anthem, who proposed renewing the current plan at the same rates we are currently in the plan for this year with no change. So the recommendation is to renew at the current low rate with Anthem, who is the current provider.
There again, any questions or comments for Terry?
Make a motion to approve the renewal of that up for our, for Anthem for the life insurance for the city.
And I'll second it.
Second, there was like three voices. Schultz? Motion made by Alderman Ochs, signed by Alderman Schultz for the approval to the life insurance renewal with Anthem. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessely?
Yes.
Alderman Ochs?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Motion case six zero.
And next we have the renewal of the health insurance plan, which is the best news I have for you this evening. Originally, when this was sent out, and Maria's here from JW Terrell, should you have any specific questions that I can't answer? When we sent out for the renewal of the current plan, which was with Coventry GHP, which we've learned was bought out by Aetna, so regardless if we didn't change anything, we were changing coverage because now we would be moving over to the Aetna coverages. So we received a renewal under the proposed Aetna plan, which would have been a 4.7% increase over what our current rates were. We also received a proposal from United Healthcare. Initially, when they came back with the preliminary rates on this, it was about 30-some percent less than what our current rates were. So Maria suggested that we actually complete the health questionnaire so that we could get a final rate, which you have in front of you this evening, and it actually came in at 14.3% less than what our current rates are. This plan also includes the BJC Health System physicians and hospitals, which we did not currently have. And if you look down in the center of the page, we would have converted over some of the things that are changing are, for example, the cost for the out-of-pocket when you visit your primary care physician. Current plan is $20, we would have increased to $25, even with the renewal under the Aetna plan, and the UHC plan also is at that same $25 rate. Prescription drugs, which is also something that's important to all of our employees, stay the same as what our current coverage is. So I really do not see any negative side of this plan in moving over to U H C. Is there anything, Maria, you would like to add specifically? You want to go to the podium?
Basically, you're asking just for a renewal with, changing it?
No, it's a change, it's a change in provider to United Healthcare.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Maria Llewellyn, I'm Senior Account Manager at JW Tarell, I'm happy that we're working with you on your insurance. And as Terry mentioned, the plan that you have in place now isn't a plan that could be renewed, so it would be changed. So the net healthcare plan is very comparable to what Anthem was offering you. I think one thing I just want to make sure we all understand is, anytime you make a change from one carrier to another, some of the providers that are currently in that work won't necessarily be in that work, and some of the providers that aren't currently in that work will be in that work. And right now, specifically because you have, you don't have the B J C network, Barnes Jewish Christian, you will have that added to the United Healthcare network, so that will be a plus. But I just always like to caution people, so they know it's not 100%, but overall, it's a 99% match. The only other thing I would caution is that the formulary, the prescription drugs, that will change just a little bit. So you might have a drug right now that's currently at the low $3 to $10, it might now move to the $35. But those are really the only things I would, I just like to make sure you understand that might be a change.
Okay.
Obviously, why is the United Healthcare so much cheaper? Is this market conditions?
Sure, so you're right. So over, every three to four years, the markets change, so different carriers have cheaper prices, and what they do is they file every year, they file with the government and say, "These are our rates." So some rates, some years the rates are cheaper, some years the rates aren't as competitive. So this year, United Healthcare is very competitive. In addition, you've been with Coventry for quite some time, so when you've been with that, they watch your risk, and the rates go up. So this is just the market as well as your risk.
So what's the relationship between Coventry, United Health? Because my understanding was if you're an individual, you probably work with Coventry, if you're a company, you'd be with United Health, is that a false assumption?
Well, there are individual policies with Coventry, as there are with United Healthcare, but these policies, right now that we're talking about, the Coventry, which will be Aetna, and the United Healthcare, they're all group policies.
Can you explain 50% of service as defined by Missouri law for the chiropractic service?
Sure. So about three to five years ago, you could charge whatever you wanted, I'm sorry, the carriers could pay anything they wanted towards chiropractic. But it became a law that they had to pay a certain percentage of it. So rather than saying the $20 that you have in place now, it's 50% of the service. So they're just following exactly to the T. So they're not giving a dollar amount that they will pay, they're saying they'll pay 50% of the service charged.
So the other 50 will be the deductible?
The other 50 will go towards the person's deductible, yes.
And the rates here have been, are final?
They're final. So Terry and Brandy helped me gather all of the applications, we sent that on to United Healthcare, the underwriter looked at all of those applications, and this was the final rate based on all the employees that we showed up. Yeah, so it is, it is good.
That's really good. It's a good thing, 10%.
Anything you weren't in that, Matt?
Yeah, okay.
I'd certainly make a motion that we certainly change healthcare programs.
I would second that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve the changing of health insurance to go with United Healthcare, by Alderman Miller, and signed by Alderman Ock. Voca vote, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My next item is the draft letter to MoDOT that you all had requested last meeting be drafted for you at this meeting. Patrick McKenna is the Director of MoDOT out of Jeff City, so we have addressed the draft letter to him and expressed your concerns over the lack of sidewalks and pedestrian ways on North Highway 47. And I think that was in your drop box for your review.
Yes, it was. Thank you very much for drafting that.
You're welcome.
Is this just an FYI?
No, actually, if there's changes, this is to be signed by all of you. So if you have changes, or you all want to have a discussion, this is just the draft.
Do the new board members understand what we're talking about on this letter?
Not really.
Okay, would you like to explain it, Mayor?
Basically, we had a meeting with MoDOT not too long ago, and Terry was a part of that meeting, where we were told that due to the expansion issues on North 47, if we put in sidewalks, it would be at our cost, and if we chose at any time, or if they chose to expand at any time, it would be tore up there again at our loss, and not replaced in their right of way. Am I speaking that correctly?
Well, and there is not enough easement. We tried to ask MoDOT to allow us to put in sidewalks on their right-of-way easement. There is not enough area there to be able to do that. So if the city wanted to put in sidewalks, we would have to go to each of those property owners and purchase right-of-way to be able to put in sidewalks, and then MoDOT said, "If we expand the roadway, and this easement that you've obtained is in the way, then we're going to tear out your sidewalks, and you would have to put them in yourself." And I'll be happy to provide the letter to the three of you who've not seen that, that documents that discretion.
The regards for this, though, is because we've seen a very large increase of people complaining about, people walking down from the northern, our city limits in dark clothing at night, during the day. Police officers trying to give escorts to people just because they don't want them in. So, you know, it's a major concern we have, and I don't believe, in my opinion, it was properly addressed by MoDOT, or was it given the consideration needed?
Yeah, I think this has been, I think Mike probably can vouch for this, we probably discussed this issue about safety on North Highway 47 for many, many years, and it seems like we've always been in a position where the state basically says, "We don't even do anything." Or the board would say, "Well, you know, we'd like to do something, but as soon as we do it, it's going to be torn up, so what's the point?" And we just feel like this, somehow this is going to have to, in my opinion, it's going to have to be addressed over the next few years, in terms of some kind of project, and we need to get their attention that this is an issue, and that which is the purpose of the letter. And then we probably, in budgets, meetings, and discussions, need to have some kind of discussion, maybe even looking at the comprehensive plan, as to where, if they see significant growth and development north of Highway 47, then it would make sense that the city might want to restructure some of their budget dollars, and look at this road project with the sidewalks. So I think the letter is kind of putting the MoDOT on notice that this is an issue that you need to be aware of.
Well, and I think, it's admirable, but I'm going to tell you, I think it's also an accountability to our people, our citizens, to show that we're going to go take it to the fight and say, "This isn't just something that's going to be our issue. We've made you aware of it, you're not addressing it, and therefore, I mean, for a while, we've put up with those arguments, we are not arguing complaints, we're not having a resolve. This is a resolve, so we can show people to say, 'Here's an answer that we've been getting.'"
The thing I really have, take issue with, if the city, if we do address it on our own, and we go out and get the easements from the property owners, well, then the state can come in and, like they said, just take it over. They haven't had, they haven't had to do the work to get the easements. So it's a double loss for us, not just on the cost.
We should need to talk about our comprehensive plan. It's a big issue, it's a major problem.
Well, I think we, it's good.
So do we have to make a motion to approve your letter?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the letter as drafted regarding the safety concerns on Highway 47 to MoDOT.
I'll second that. That's definitely.
Motion made by Alderman Schell Harvey, signed by Alderman Miller, if I could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes, with one amendment. You put a title next to my name, so they know.
Sure, we can do that.
Forgot that.
I didn't know. I didn't know this either.
What do you mean? Oh. Gotcha.
All right, motion carries six zero with the amendment to Alderman Schultz's title on the floor. Thank you.
And then I have a couple of items for you under operational updates. New elected official orientation is this Friday. Any of you seasoned elected officials who would like to stop in and have lunch with us, you're certainly welcome to do so, if you have the time to do that. I think we have planned on lunch coming in, starting at 11:30. So if you get even a break for a few minutes and want to come over and join us, let us know, and we will plan food for you to be able to join us for lunch. Also, on the 28th of April, if you would please mark your calendars, PGAV, the firm that is completing the feasibility study for the new interchange, will be here that evening to present their final draft. That's on a Thursday. And my question for you is, what time would you like to start?
What's the date?
The 28th of April.
Did you put that in an email?
I will.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm right with you.
7:30.
7:30?
It's a third, why don't we do 6:30?
I have things to do. You asked, you asked a time, so.
Talking about in the morning?
No, at night.
You said at evening, right?
Yes.
So 7:30 works for you? Okay. That works for me.
But don't say, you know, you all got.
No, no, that works.
It's fine with me.
I'll make it in town by then.
7:30.
All right, that's old people.
You'll make it, we'll spark you up.
We'll make some caffeinated coffee.
What days is this?
It's on a Thursday.
28, Thursday.
Also, I'd like you to know that Charter has changed the channel that the public access shows on.
I don't know that that's exactly correct. It's different here in this building, but at my house, it's still 993.
Melody's the one who told me this.
And she asked me. So it's on me.
Okay, so here's the plan. If you can't find it on 993, look on 992, because perhaps that's where it is.
It's easier just to go to YouTube.
Yes, it is much easier. You can do it whenever you choose to look at it on YouTube. And then last, but certainly not least, the event for Special Olympics is coming up very shortly, and I think Greg is going to tell us all about it.
We actually have several events planned, and kudos to Jack for putting together a scavenger hunt slash motorcycle cruise on the morning of May 7th. Jack, help me with the time.
10 to 3.
So starting at 10:00 AM, back at the pavilion, signups will happen there, and go kind of all day. And then that evening, again on Saturday, May 7th, we're doing our first tip a cop this year, this time at Emo's, from 5 to 9. So we're hoping to see a big crowd there. Both of those events are publicized on the Facebook page, on the city's Facebook page. The other big event, and the one that we all look forward to every year, is the torch run, which will happen on May 11th this year, that's Wednesday, during the day, starting around 10 o'clock in the morning, out in Forestelle, and generally taking the service roads back this way towards Warrington, hopefully arriving here between 12:15 and 12:30. And we'll have a reception here at City Hall, and, you know, do all the things that come with that. So would be great to see a bunch of people out there, and, you know, do the Special Olympics thing, it's a great cause.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like the turnout keeps getting larger and larger.
I think so. I was actually reviewing some photos today from years past, and last year, we did have an extraordinarily large group, so.
It's always fun.
It is.
I'd like to address something with Terry, if you don't mind. Terry, you know, and people might think I'm a little off my rocker, but, which I'm sure you do, I'm sure you do.
We'll just confirm it.
We'll confirm it. We saved approximately $80,000 on our employee healthcare program from the expiring program, correct? And even while we were talking about this before, my gut feeling, based on the community and the community needs, and what good this organization does, I would like us to consider increasing the Agape donation to a flat $20,000 this year, since we had additional savings in our health and wellness program, that we could put towards the health and wellness of our community.
I mean, to me, that makes sense. I realize we're biased, and it's one of my passions, but it would make sense that we would do that. You know, Michelle was kind of modest about how many people are coming into the community homeless, you know, how many people are actually living on parking lots with children who don't have any place to go. It's a fairly regular occurrence that they're running into, and I just don't think the public's aware of that, and I know this is becoming their focus, because these are more and more difficult things to deal with, and they're really impacting children. There's a case last week where there was a lady in one of the store parking lots, who was a single mother, and had a young infant who was handicapped, and they were living in their car in the parking lot. So this is kind of what we're starting to see in this community, and so I think 2,000, to me, is just not that much more money.
And I don't think it is, and I don't want to slight any of that, but does that add anything to what we would require from them, or, I know we have certain restrictions of what we need to do on certain instances?
They always meet the restrictions. They've already provided their audit, they've already provided their financial information, so everything that we require of those groups that receive funds from the city, they have already met.
So then my second question will be to you, Mr. Corvill, since we've already put a motion on the floor, it's been approved, how do we go back to correct that?
All right, you can just make a motion to amend that.
To increase by 2,000 dollars?
I mean, you could do that even with the budget amendment, but it'd make sense to do it now, since it's part of the budget.
I'd like to make that motion to amend our prior motion, which was approved, to increase our total donation to Agape for the upcoming year to 20,000.
Second.
But, point clarity, it's not a donation, it's a purchase of service.
Correct. Okay, so to recap that, a motion has been made and is on the floor for the increase of services provided by Agape to, increase it by 2,000 dollars to a flat rate of $20,000 for the purchase of those services from Agape. The motion was made by Alderman Schell Harvey, and signed by Alderman Delloy. Can I have a roll call vote on that, please?
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda would be hearing from Grounds and Maintenance Director, Brad Beadig.
Good evening. I have a list of items to be approved for sale. Do we do this on gov deals? We have a shredder that we had here at City Hall, and then they went to the new security of the crosscut one instead of the straight strip cutter, so this is what we're selling, this one. We have a 1997 Ranger pickup, a little pull behind cart that we're getting rid of, Crown Vic, which I think that was the old building, Department One, and then 2011 Impala, that was a police vehicle that's out of service.
Any questions, Brad? Any comments? All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the, to sell the list of items.
I'll make a motion to sell the vehicles.
Motion made by Alderman Schell Harvey, signed by Alderman Miller, if I could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
at the next meeting, taking consent items off the agenda and just make a comment to the new people. Typically, before we had the consent agenda, Brad would have his full report, and then we could ask questions about the full report. And Jack coming up, he would have a full report, and Guy would have a full report. So we'd be part of the meeting, we could discuss the report. Decision was made by a prior board that those reports should be just put at the beginning, and we wouldn't really discuss them unless there was something unusual, then you could request them be put on the agenda and pulled out of consent. So my thought along this line was if three of you, being new, feel like it's beneficial to you to have those, so Brad would give his full report and along with other items, if that would be beneficial to get you up to speed. It's kind of what I was asking you to think about for the next meeting. Just for the record, everybody wanted the consent agenda, and I was the only one who opposed it, so I'm trumping my own cause at the same time. But so think about that, and that's why I asked it to be put on the next meeting.
Well, and in addition to that, by having the consented agenda, it really puts the ownership on us to make sure that everything is reviewed in great detail before you come into the meeting. So you either make sure you've done due diligence on all the reports because they spend a lot of time putting those together.
Yes, you do.
And so either you do the due diligence beforehand and ask your questions before the meeting of Terry, or we open them all back up and go through them one by one, which doesn't matter to me anyway.
Which, and I will go on add, some people have voiced that sometimes it seems like we hide things in consent agendas. That is available for public, is available for people to see. Just because we don't cover it doesn't mean it's hidden. So, and to spring, springboard off of that, the increase on the two thousand, you will be notifying them tomorrow, please.
I'll notify them tonight.
No problem.
I'm going to text my wife right now.
All right. Next on the agenda would be hearing from zoning officer and building commissioner, Jack En.
First item is a site plan approval request for Fairground Villas, SP PUD ninety-one A, proposed planned unit development. This is carried over from the April fifth Board of Alderman meeting, and the applicant has submitted revised plans and sewer easement information. And Bart's here to represent them.
Yeah, I personally had no other further questions on this.
Well, it's good.
Anyway. For the record, I'm Bart Quorman with Lewis and Beatty, Surveys and Engineers. I have Mike Marty here and Carla Potts with NACAC here, the applicants on this project. It's been a project that's gone through a lot of revisions and a lot of discussion over the last year and actually beyond, but getting pretty close to finalizing everything here. From the last meeting, we've added some trees, submitted a set of sewer plans that the city's reviewed, and I think we've got pretty much everything settled, but especially with the new half of Alderman, kind of want to go over it. But it's basically forty units of senior housing located at Fairgrounds Road. So we have more than enough parking spaces per the requirement, more than enough trees. We've put in some green space and done a lot of things, added handicap spaces to almost every building, and access, add a loading space on the fourplex. We've also added a community building that wasn't in the original plans early on. We've also added a gazebo in the green space amongst other stuff. It's been through the correspondence with staff and the board of Alderman, but I'll answer any questions and address any comments anybody has.
To get this up to speed also, the developer has met numerous times with the property owners, obviously property owners, when they're used to looking at a vacant field, they want to look at a vacant field, but we can't deny somebody from developing property they own. And so he's met numerous times with the property owners in the area who made some suggestions to changes, there's been some back and forth, and what you have in front of you, I think, is the result of a lot of discussion and a lot of work, a lot of go back and relook at stuff, and maybe there's things that some of the owners would want differently, but I think you have to realize that everything's a compromise to a certain point. And I haven't heard back from any of the property owners in the area for a while on this project, but I think we've kind of beaten this horse quite a while, and that's why I made the comment earlier, I feel comfortable moving forward with what it's happened.
And I think a lot of the improvements have been made to what we wanted, so.
Right. That's what it looked like to me. The one, the one question I, it seemed like early on, there was a question about the density of everything there.
Right.
Do I feel like it's going to be comfortable now for?
Yeah, to address the density, yeah. The zoning allows up to sixteen units per acre. This is just slightly under eight units per acre, so.
Yeah, I had Jack pull a density survey of similar senior citizen property in the community, so he went out and looked at where we have senior citizen project, property, and the number of units per acre is very close to what we typically see in the community. It's not significantly more dense than any other senior complex here. It's about in line with everything else is, because the density issue kept coming up and coming up, so thought was, well, how do you do a comparison to see if it's really dense? Because when you look at a drawing, it looks dense, I mean, it really does, but when you sit down there and do a comparison of how many acres versus how many units on comparable type structures or comparable type projects like this, it looks like it's in line. So even though the drawing looks dense, it doesn't appear to be any more from that measurement anyway.
And just so you know, there will be a bill later on the agenda for this, so there's no need for approval on this right now. That was pretty much the only question I had. Anything else I thought looked, and it looked like they addressed, addressed the last couple things they had, so.
I don't have any questions, Bart, other than can you help us with North Highway forty-seven?
I've received, on my different hat that I have, I've received numerous emails and constituent stuff, and we've discussed that at the planning meeting and some other things. Right now, there's no funding for that, but, you know, depends on the appropriations year, next year, MoDOT, maybe something can happen.
Well, and this kind of fits in with our comprehensive plan, too, and that we wanted, that was one of the issues that we talked about, was increased senior housing in the area. So. His level is towards that. Any other questions, Brad?
Staff does have one recommendation on the conditional use permit. The sewer that was approved, they have not acquired the easement yet from the fire department, correct?
Right.
So we would just ask that you make it a special condition that they acquire the easement as submitted and approved by the city, which we talked with Bart and said, no problem, that's the owner's responsibility. So we are asking for that special condition, so we'll have to come back with any type of revised plans.
Under the conditional use permit.
Yes, but to amend the motion to approve it with the special condition that the easement, as approved by the city, be acquired by the owner.
But you're wanting to amend that to the bill that we have later on the agenda.
Correct, yes.
You want to go ahead and address this conditioning use permit since we haven't hit that yet?
Can I ask a question about, in the notes to this, there was a discussion that the city is going to handle the sewer up to the point where it enters the property, and then anything else in terms of uses and permits is basically the responsibility of the property owner. And so, and I assume that applies for the street. The streets are going to remain in the complex, the property of the property owner, and the city's not going to take them over, because I think sometimes it's surprising, if you look at the development that's immediately west of Walmart property, and you look at that whole apartment complex, those are really city streets within the complex, which I don't know if everybody realized at the time that the city was actually taking over streets within the complex. But here, those streets will remain part of the owner's property.
That is correct.
Okay.
Jack, I'm sorry.
The next item was just the conditional use permit approval request for Fairground Villas project, CUP PUD forty-three A.
I believe we've already kind of touched on that, but.
Yeah, they run hand in hand.
They do, too, yeah.
Their motion for approval for that one passed six to zero with one extension and two absent and one vacancy at the March third Plains Zoning Commission meeting, with the condition that the covenants and restrictions are reviewed by the city attorney. Any revisions or recommendations by the city attorney are part of, are part of the Board of Aldermen's consideration, and that the development remains a senior housing development for thirty years.
Any other questions? No. All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bart.
Well, let me make one quick comment to the developer and to NACAC. We appreciate your patience on this project and wish you the best of luck, and hopefully you'll follow seniors, and it'll be a good place for everybody to live. So thank you.
Thank you from Alderman.
Next item is a proposal amendment to section four oh five, point two oh five, planned unit developments, ADM dash eighty.
Any questions, Brad?
Which one's this?
For twenty-one C. Section four zero five, point two eight five, the planned unit development, ADM dash eighty. Any comments?
No.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment to section four zero five, point two eight five, the planned unit development, ADM dash eighty.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Delloy, signed by Alderman Shell Harvey, if I could have a roll call over, please.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
And the next item is amendment, proposal amendment to section four twenty-five sign regulations, ADM eighty-one.
Can I, can I recap what I thought I heard the P and Z say, to see if I understood it? I don't know if everybody had a chance to watch the P and Z meeting on YouTube. If you didn't, it kind of, you see the process, but here's what I think they decided, because this issue came up because we had people putting temporary signs in windows that were illegal. We put a moratorium on that so we would not enforce that until we could relook at the ordinance. And when does the moratorium expire?
May the second.
So we may want to consider moving it again, but, so basically, if I understood right, what the Planning and Zoning Commission said is that they wanted to follow Wentzville's percentages, but they wanted to look at the wall of a building as a whole wall, whether part of its glass or part of its brick. They didn't really care when the, the percentage of the sign is based on that whole wall.
On the actual storefront.
Right.
Whether it's brick or glass.
So they don't care, so if the person who has an all glass building doesn't have an advantage of somebody who has an all brick building with small windows. So they want to take that whole calculation, which makes sense. And then the other thing they, and they want to use the Wentzville's figuring, because the bigger the building gets, the sign is just accordingly is properly. And then the second piece of that was, they said in no case do they want the windows to be more than fifty percent covered with temporary signs. So those were the two major components of that, and when you calculate the whole space, you're calculating as a whole. Is that really the summary of what they said?
Yes, but it included permanent or temporary signs over the windows. They didn't want any signage to be greater than fifty percent, and the window signage would be included in your calculations for the storefront.
Right.
And that was how they felt gave the most level playing field for all the businesses in town, is a hundred percent based on your storefront.
Way too complicated.
Thank you.
That's way too complicated. I mean, I really appreciate the efforts of the planning and zoning, but we're not really a Wentzville, and we're not a Washington. I didn't see it on YouTube, however, I did read the minutes, but it's, but my gosh, we're getting way too complicated over, over signs and windows. I mean, I know I'm new, but I'd certainly like to at least table this so we can study it. There's been a lot of discussion over these signs and windows. I just can't believe there's just this much going on over putting a temporary sign or a permanent sign in your place of business, and you're going to advertise a sale. I just, it just baffles me.
Yeah, I walked away from the meeting feeling the same thing you did. I don't see why we should be having a staff person going out, measuring signs and signs, and saying, well, making some calculation. Why does the city have to interfere with the business person's opportunity to make money by saying that your sign can only be so big in this window as opposed? Shouldn't that be their consideration? I mean, that's kind of where I was at after really thinking through the process, so I'm kind of where you're at on this whole thing.
So you'd rather see a table?
Well, I think we need to have a discussion on it.
And more, and more investigation be done.
Can I ask a question, Jack? Ask, good question.
Absolutely.
Okay. And the way I read this, then, you know where Taley Oil is?
Where?
On forty-seven and, forty-seven and the service road?
North service.
North of the bridge.
You're talking about the gas station on the corner?
Taley Oil Gas Station.
The gas station on the north.
Is that the picture you showed me, Gary?
Yeah, I took a picture of that.
Okay, so they're going to have to take down that, that whole mural they have on their window to be in compliance with this? Is that what I'm, is that what they're saying?
The picture that Gary showed me would definitely be in violation of the sign code.
Okay.
Because it covers more than fifty percent of the window.
Let me go back to see, and that's, that's where I get, and that's where I kind of get, you know, we're, we're not Wentzville, we're, I was in St. Charles today, and I was, you know, some of those stores there that have the big windows, they will have the sun sheet on the window with some signs on it. Now, that's in St. Charles County, I don't know about Wentzville, but I, and going back in history, and Gary might remember this, I remember when I was on the board back in the nineties, and when they first built that store, they put all their beer right along the window, along forty-seven, and they had stacks of beer there. And I remember residents complaining that they shouldn't stack their beers in the windows, that's incentive to come in and buy beer, that's bad for the kids to see and all that. So now they cover it up, well, now we don't, we don't like that either. This, none of this stuff makes sense to me anymore, you know? So I agree. I would like to see, unless there's, unless the police department has a real issue with security and stuff like that, I have a real problem with telling them to take, that that would be in violation, because I think it looks, it looks better like that than it would be if it, you know, I don't know. So I would like to. Am I missing something? Is there a fire hazard, or is there a safety issue of covering their windows?
Sometimes there can be concerns. Well, there can be concerns. I know, we've talked at one point, though, of if it's covered up and there is a burglary going on inside, you cannot see what's going on on the inside of that building from a law enforcement perspective. You cannot address issues, see what's going on, see how many hostages you may have in a situation with, with a covering that cannot be seen through, or what be it.
But you'd have the same issue if the building had a small window.
No windows.
Possible windows.
But I mean, with, with there having, being windows where we can say restrictions, I'm not saying for or against it, I mean, I'm just letting you know, you asked about a safety issue. That is one of the safety perspectives.
Because I mean, it seems like it's such a huge deal for such a silly thing.
Well, and I'm going to cut to chase on this. Is there any comments you'd like to make?
No.
Okay, is there any other Aldermen that have issue with wanting to table this to the, to get more information and possible discussion on this?
Well, I don't, the only question I have is do we have to defer, change the deferral, or we got enough time? That's my question.
Do you have to? I'm sorry?
May second.
Yeah, that's fine. If we'll do an ordinance, you can vote to extend the moratorium, but, I mean, yeah, vote now.
Vote tonight to extend the moratorium.
Do you have an issue? Do you like extending it and table it?
I think actually we put in there that.
That constitutes the majority of the board of what asks to table this, so we are going to table this issue, since we cannot get a.
Do you guys want to do a vote about extending the moratorium?
Yes, I would, yes. I'll second.
Who made the motion? Okay.
Do we have a date that we want to extend it to?
Motion.
What did we do last time? Jack, sixty days?
We did sixty days.
Yeah, I think I.
It was nine.
Sixty days, yeah.
And then I'd like to ask a question. What would we have to do without, do away with the ordinance there in the future, or plan to do that after?
Simple. We'd just do an ordinance repealing that section.
Okay, and that's what we'll do in our discussion later.
Yes, we have to go back to planning and zoning with that.
We, you guys, they already had their public hearing on the ordinance. You can, you could remove it without sending it back to planning and zoning.
That's fine. We got our moratorium.
How about we put this on for the discussion topic for next meeting?
That's what I was going to suggest.
That's what I was going to ask in the question here.
Yeah, one of the advantages, if we ever take advantage of, is putting everything into consent agenda, is we have time to discuss one topic item like this, so, that would be the one advantage, that would be the one thing I could see, which we haven't done yet, but we could do.
That certainly makes sense.
All right, there is, there is a motion on the floor currently, I believe, the motion is to extend the moratorium by 60 days for the section of 425 Sign Regulations, the motion was made by Alderman Schultz and signed by Alderman Miller, if you can have a roll call vote, two, for that, please.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. All right, anything else, Jack?
Saturday, we collected 254 tires, 1.4 tons of electronics and computers, 6.8 tons of TVs, 4.1 tons of steel, it was a very busy day.
Off the hip, can you tell me, is that an increase from the last?
Oh, yes.
I love hearing that.
Good job, Jack.
Means our town's.
Good job to all the staff that was out there.
You have a case with volunteers from the Army.
Including Mike's wife.
Yes.
Can I interject something?
Sure.
I just want to thank Guy and his crew for the sidewalk work that's being done on Wabash, sidewalks are well used by the kids on the bike, by the walkers and the artists, they're doing a great job on the sidewalks. As the artists, yes, they, they do their share, so, appreciate the work.
You're going to embarrass Truesdale, though, you know that.
We stopped, we stopped shooting up.
Stops right there, they're at the point where it's stopping, so, it's like a great prize, you can appreciate the work of it.
Thank you, I'll let them know.
Yeah, and Guy doesn't have anything he's asking us for.
Well, that's probably.
Just wait the next meeting.
All right, next item on the agenda would be build of ordinance, entertain, entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 08-16.
Call for the first reading, bill 08-16.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Kesslerly, if I can, or, I'm sorry?
A zoning ordinance is authorized under section 405.390 of the municipal code of the city of Florence, Missouri, approving a preliminary site plan for Fairgrounds Villas, a proposed planned unit development located at 608 Fairgrounds Road.
Now, when do we, before I call for this, before the roll call vote, Chris, do we add the?
This is the site plan.
This is the site plan.
It's a conditional use.
This is the site plan.
I'm sorry. Call for, entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 08-16.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Motion made by Alderman Shell Harvey, signed by Alderman Miller.
A zoning ordinance is authorized under section 405.390 of the municipal code of the city of Florence, Missouri, approving a preliminary site plan for Fairgrounds Villas, a proposed planned unit development located at 608 Fairgrounds Road.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Next item up would be the motion, I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 09-16.
What's the condition we want to put on that?
With the, I believe it's the added amendment of obtaining the proper easement for the sewer proposed.
Correct, the sewer is approved by the city.
And make a motion for the first reading of bill number 09-16 with the addition of the, of the requirement that we receive the proper paperwork for the sewer easement as approved or as proposed by the city.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Schultz.
An ordinance approving the conditional use permit for Fairgrounds Villas, a proposed planned unit development with senior citizen apartments located at 608 Fairgrounds Road.
Well, entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 09-16 with the added amendment of obtaining the proper easement for the sewer proposed.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Miller, signed by Alderman Schultz.
An ordinance approving the conditional use for Fairgrounds Villa, a proposed planned unit development with senior citizen apartments located at 608 Fairgrounds Road.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
On the, on the next ordinance, do we have a timeframe for this project? This is the one of the sidewalks and the lights on the east side, is that?
It's getting ready to drop today.
Yeah, I got a meeting tomorrow with Cochran tomorrow at 10 a.m., and then we'll, I'll know the timeline, timeframe and that.
Okay, any other questions, you guys?
Good stuff.
I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 10-16.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Miller, signed by Alderman Schultz.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the city of Florence, Missouri, for a sidewalk improvements agreement for the installation and maintenance of sidewalk improvements along the east side of Highway 47 from Old Highway 40 to Ashland Street.
And entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 10-16.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, signed by Alderman Delloy.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the city of Florence, Missouri, for a sidewalk improvements agreement for the installation and maintenance of sidewalk improvements along the east side of Highway 47 from Old Highway 40 to Ashland Street.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?